Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We called the regular meeting of Taus County Board of Commissioners together. Today is May 4th, be with you. Sorry, I was all over Facebook this morning, so I had to work that in somewhere. I hadn't thought of that. Clerk Callero.
Commissioner, Chairman Fabro.
Present.
Vice Chair Gackes.
I am here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Lakenar.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell is sick today. I'd like to acknowledge we have in our audience our Treasurer, Mrs. Cunhio, and also Mayor Dan Veroni. Did you try to sit up here when he came in the building?
I tried to. I felt like I wasn't at that corner waiting. I felt like I wasn't home.
If everyone would please stand, I would like to welcome our Board Chief, Mr. Curtis Sandoval. He's going to give us some words of wisdom and spiritual thought to start this meeting off on the right note. So if you'll come up. And it's your choice, sir, to face the audience or face us. We don't get offended if you face them, but the floor is yours. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having me here. What you said, I pray that I need to thank you, but also express what blessings I want to give to you as little one here as commissioners. That you have an open heart and blessings to your home and your families and all of you that are here too. And blessing that you respect one another, help one another, and help the ones that you need and to work together. And also work as a common ground, as we as neighbors, to work together so we can make it stronger here at home, we call it Taus. And that we get our blessings from the Creator, our Mother, our Father, who gives us a hope of being well and a hope and fruitful in what we do in our lives. And as we have our own, men ones that we have to watch over and bless them that they take the right path and go up to, we take roads that will make members of this community also to respect the land and the earth and the water and the ground that we stand on that protects us all together. We have a unique culture and we have a nice place here that we, the home of the Red Bull people and also the Taus Valley that's been here for many years. Bless all of us that are here and bless the people and everybody that comes here and bless them that they go in peace and also go where they go where they have to go to make life easy and safe for everybody. And again, I'd like to bless all of you in your language and also in mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chief. Mayor Veroni, would you please lead us to the pledge?
I would gladly constitute the life of the United States of America and constitute the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and process of law.
Thank you. Anything else to honor or you can mention, commissioners? Hearing none, we will move on. The next item is approval of the agenda. I have the following changes that I would ask you to all consider under 9, 8, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision regarding approval of Resolution 2017, 26, Resolution A1, directing publication of Orders 272-02, Taus County Personal Policies and Procedures. I'm asking that that be postponed to a undetermined time as well as Item 10A, which is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision regarding request of a meeting date and time for a public hearing to vacate a five lots summary subdivision and law line adjustment survey plat associated with the summary subdivision. That be postponed to a undetermined time. And Item 13C, Discussion, Consideration, and Approval in Mexico Association of County Chancellors, Taus County Commissioners during the annual inspection of Taus County Adult Attention Center Procedures for the annual inspection as well as Item D, the Report Regarding the Taus County Commission 2016 Inspection of Taus County Adult Attention Center. Those were to be presented by Commissioner O'Donnell, who is not here today. So I'm asking if those four items be postponed to an undetermined time. Would you approve the agenda with the changes listed by the chairman?
I'll second Mr. Chairman's motion.
Clerk Callero.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lakenar.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gackes.
Yes.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. Next item is Item 5, Awards and Recognition. This is the presentation awarding Taus County Employee of the Month for April 2017, presented by Mr. Tim Corner of the County Department. This will be presented by his supervisor, our Planning Director, Mr. Edward Vito.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Corner and Ms. Victor. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning. Mr. Corner has been a pleasant surprise and a welcome addition to the Taus County Planning Department. Mr. Corner became the Taus County Planning Department GIS Specialist, Rule Addressing Coordinator in March of 2015. Within a month of becoming an employee of the County Department, Mr. Corner participated in the New Mexico Flood Managers Association Supreme Workshop in Albuquerque, New Mexico, where Mr. Corner successfully, upon testing, obtained Certified Flop Cave Manager. From Mr. Corner's initial hiring in March of 2015, Mr. Corner has done above and beyond expectations in all facets of his work duties and responsibilities. Mr. Corner's performance speaks for itself, and Mr. Corner is certainly deserving of being Employee of the Month. Mr. Corner has been tasked with some difficult projects and although frustrated at times, Mr. Corner's ability to see politics through is remarkable and truly reflective of his personal character. Mr. Corner has not only become a valuable asset to the Taus County Planning Department, but also to the entire Taus County organization. Mr. Corner assists nearly every department of the county specifically with his GIS. Mr. Corner's accomplishments in his short-term tenure with the Taus County Planning Department are many, in fact, too many to mention. A few examples are, number one, manage the successful revision of the Taus County Rule Addressing Ordinance. Number two, install and maintain the new dispatch mapping system still in jail base. Number three, created the address binder web map to share address data across our community and really since the information is on the internet throughout the world. Promoted and assisted in securing a $600,000 MIDAR file over Taus County by FEMA and the USGS. Obtained and configured free GIS software, QGIS, for existing towers for fieldwork use. Produced the Taus County Road Inventory Maps and Data for the Public Works Department, submitted for state funding. Amongst many other projects and accomplishments. Mr. Corner's many accomplishments are impressive in the short period of two years, considering that Mr. Corner's predecessors historically all vacated the position in the same amount of time or less. As previously stated, Mr. Corner has become a valuable asset to the Taus County organization and the citizens of Taus County. I would like to believe that Mr. Corner is similar to a flower. He has shown growth, has blossomed a bit, but is nowhere near his potential and abilities and this mark that we continue to support Mr. Corner in his growth. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Before I present Mr. Corner to you, I would also like to yield a podium to Mr. Montalero Martinez, who would like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dominic.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioner. I just wanted to say a few words on behalf of Tim here. He's our NSAC Coordinator also for 911 and does all of our updating about all of our 911 system and addressing system for 911. Me and him have gained a really, a great working relationship with each other. He comes over and updates our system twice a month and keeps up with all 911 systems and new addressing that he's been working on, rule addressing, so forth. He's also been a tricky part of with our NEXPEN 911 stuff that we're working on as well. And he's attended a couple of meetings and trainings that I wasn't able to attend that he came back and informed me on. And does a great job. Can't say much more about Tim than he's a great person. He's an awesome, awesome addition to the family here at Taus County. He does a great job and I'm very happy to work with him. I'm very happy that he's receiving this award today and I congratulate him.
Thank you, Dominic.
Mr. Corner, on behalf of the Taus County Board of Commissioners, the citizens of Taus County, I as your Planning Director and the staff from the County Department, the County Manager and the County Attorney, congratulations on this Employee of the Month for the month of April. As we select Employee of the Month, Mr. Corner gets a one-day off and also gets a $25 gift certificate to form.
Mr. Corner, thank you. You have something to say this morning?
I'd just like to say, you know, I really appreciate the recognition, but it's not me alone who's been able to, I couldn't have achieved what I've done without the assistance of the Commissioners of County Manager, our Attorney, of Edward DeHill, who's becoming, evolving into a really great leader of our department, not just managing. To my subordinate, Eric Montoya, he started a year ago, he's freed me up to do a lot of this work. You know, we've added hundreds of missing addresses to our data. We've gone from NSAC match rate of 15%. I'm hoping next month it will be around 80 to 90%. We've achieved a lot as a whole department and team and we've got a lot more to achieve. There's still hundreds of missing addresses out there, tens if not hundreds of roads that need naming. And now the ordinance, I think, comes into power today. We're going to start to work on that project. So, you know, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who supported me and hopefully we can continue to work together to improve this wonderful community and to make it a safer place to live more.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words from Mr. DeHill and Mr. Martinez and he helped me adopt both, dressed like Easter eggs today. With this sincerity. Do you ever have a bad day? I've yet to see one. I mean, you're, you're just a pleasure to be around and you're a great employee and I really appreciate it. The bad thing about all the accolades that you're getting here today is I don't want Mr. Montalero to try to steal you away from us or anything, any of his operations, the RTV. So, but, Tim, I just, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Clerk Callero, it's been said and I agree. Thank you very much, Mr. Corner, for all that you have to our team here and how you can help our others to do things well. Thank you.
All pictures.
Another one, Brad, another one.
Mark wants his first Christmas card this year.
Other one.
He wants a solo, solo, please.
Taus County has a lot of great employees and I'm fortunate to serve along with them each and every day. Item B.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. The Taus Historic Society is having their annual luncheon on Sunday, May 7th, and the Historical Society is asked for a proclamation from Taus County. They wanted to honor Mr. Nick Bronchall and Mr. Norbert Martinez Jr. for their work with mariachi. So they've asked for this proclamation to be presented on Sunday, May 7th, so would you like me to read it or would you like to read it, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Whereas the roots of the mariachi go back hundreds of years. It was mariachi music that sold the joys, the struggles, the triumphs of the people from all cultures. The sounds of violins, trumpets, guitars, and guitones together create the sound of mariachi. And whereas in 1981, Nick Bronchall began the first mariachi class in Taus High School and Norbert Martinez Jr. was an original member of that class. And whereas the tradition of mariachi music is alive and well in our public school systems, keeping new and old songs in the hearts of our community. And whereas the popularity of Mr. Bronchall's mariachi altigrid inspired other schools in New Mexico, including Questa and Pinasco, to establish mariachi programs of their own. And whereas Norbert Martinez Jr. started off as mariachi director for Questa High School, has been the high school, Taus High School and Intespa School Director since 2008. And whereas Nick Bronchall taught mariachi music, has taught mariachi at Adams State College, Highlands University, passing on the legacy. And whereas mariachi altigrid performs at the fiestas in the Taus, Taus Plaza Live, state legislative enchanted circlement, and many other events. And whereas Mr. B and Norbert Martinez Jr. are inspirations to mariachi students in our community. And now therefore it is resolved, having learned the contributions of Nick Bronchall and Norbert Martinez Jr., the Taus County Board of Commissioners that hereby proclaim May 7th, 2017, as Nick Bronchall and Norbert Martinez Jr. Day for their leadership, promotion of mariachi music in the public school systems and community.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is, these two gentlemen have a lot of influence on a lot of the youth of our community and it's always a pleasure to hear them. They work very hard, but they do, it's unbelievable how professional they sound. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Is there someone that's going to present these for on behalf of the Commission on Sunday?
There's nobody designated. I'm going to be there, so I can do it or whoever wants to do it. That's what I was announcing this morning, that whatever you want to do it. The luncheon is at 12:30 on Sunday. I forgot to bring down the invitation. In this court, I told you to pass out the invitations to you. You guys have to proceed tomorrow.
They were in our box.
Mr. Chairman, no, I won't be able to attend, but if there is a member of the Commission that's going live event, present it, not Mr. Hall.
Agreed. I would get this in all terms.
Looks like it's going to be a long show.
Thanks for volunteering, Brett. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner, I forgot I had a note here to remind you that we do have a meeting at 10:30, but hold it for this agenda pretty quick. We have a budget after after this meeting, so I'm trying to keep moving along as fast as I can. Moving on to the next item is Item 6, Citizens Concerns. This is item, citizens are welcome to address the Commission on an item that's not on the agenda or if you're not able to stay later, you can sort of leave some comments. This is for information only, so if anybody would like to address the Commission, we ask you to keep your comments to less than five minutes on this presentation. And if you can come forward, please state your name for the record so the clerk can include it. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Carr.
I'm Kristy Holden with Taus United.
Good morning, citizens.
Sandy Olsen with Taus United.
Good morning and welcome to all four of you and that's a very attractive.
We would like to present to you a thank you card for the resolution that was adopted back of April 4th, the pro-immigration. So this is a thank you card that was signed and there's some drawings made by children with these families. There's lots of signatures, there's quite a lot of pages there. This is a token of appreciation to each and every one of you and we would like to give this to you and thank you for the resolution. We appreciate it and you have no idea how peaceful it is out there for many families and we wanted to present this to you and say thank you one more time. And we appreciate it for everything you do and everything you guys are doing.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. I wish you, there was a way that we could get that on camera, because that's such a beautiful, because you showed that to Francis over there.
We could all walk by, Mr. Chairman.
See, he wants another picture of it. Mr. Chairman, that was very beautiful and very thoughtful. This is very touching and the email sent, it was seen from, and we all need to sign that, I guess. Was said, we all need to sign that, looks like.
No. We know it's government issues.
This is to you, this is to all of you. The children signed it and families as well. There's a lot of drawings in there.
It is far amazing.
We'll display that here in the lobby to be appropriate, Commissioner.
And we have the resolutions right here.
Anissa, can you figure that out?
Yes.
That's really something special.
Thank you for your support. Thank you so much.
Sometimes we get thank yous and other gestures that are so nice that we don't want in front of the cameras, so this really is. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other citizens wishing to address the Commission this time?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bilby is not here, I think we should send out search and list.
I think that's true, Commissioner Hall are having a thorough meeting. All right, seeing no other citizens, thank you all for being here today with us. We invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting and we'll keep moving on. The next item is Item 7, Minutes. This is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision regarding approval of the April 18th, 2017 Regular Commission Meetings attended to us well over weeks ago. Pleasure, the Commission.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, I have motion and a second to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2017 Regular Meeting. Clerk Callero.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lakenar.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gackes.
Yes.
Chairman Fabro.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next item is Item 8, Presentations. This is an annual update presentation to the Taus County Board of Commissioners from the NCR TV, the North Central Regional Transit District. He comes every year and lets us know. I delivered the annual report. Jim always gives me extra copies and I bring to you guys and I hope you guys have a time, a chance to review this, but Mr. Montalero is going to go over the highlights and stuff and welcome for being, oh, our Chairman of the NCR TV Act also is Mayor Dan Veroni. And he'll start it off and then we'll turn over to Mr. Montalero.
So, thank you, Chairman, thank you, County Commissioners, Leandro, our Attorney, Mr. Big. Just always a great opportunity to be back in this home here. It's always a lot of fun. We live in a great community and it's great and we have services that, you know, bring to our community and it really impacts the lives of some of our citizens. So I, Chairman Fabro, just want to thank you. You've been a big part of the RTV. Also, Leandro, you also have been served as the all-unit member and also the Vice Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, so thank you for being a great part of that. I have, again, as the Chairman said, Anthony Montalero, who is our Executive Director, and also we have Jim Nagel, who is our PIO, so here with us today. You know, our next photo is one of the photos that's actually here in the county complex and it just really struck a bell, you know, and shows, we had some kind of service way back then in the Union Bus depot in Taus, in Taus, New Mexico, and it looks like it serviced Albuquerque and Raton. It's kind of a neat picture that you guys have had here, so just want to say thanks for recognizing the importance of transportation even back then. But we move on to our service area.
What will you have the bus fares were still the same?
Well, actually it's cheaper now. It's actually free now. Then if you look back on, in the photo, they're a dollar and a couple of bucks and now it's free, so it's, we've actually come a long way.
I gotta ask, so did they actually go all the way to Chicago? Because Jim Nagel's also a Cubs fan as I am, so maybe we could have went to watch a Cubs game for a buck back then.
That would've been great. So our service areas, as we have a map up there and it kind of shows the service areas and, you know, we service, you know, all the way from Costilla all the way down into Albuquerque, from Chama back into Santa Fe and beyond. But there's 24 fixed routes, two demand ops, one dial right and one para-transit service that has been developed and are operated by the NCR TV. We have a fleet of 64 vehicles, we have 66 employees and our annual budget is $12.4 million per year. Again, as I said before, we provide a free bus service. There is exceptions to that. The weekend, Taus Express and the mountain trails are routes that we do charge for and it's very minimal. The NCR TV provides free bus service throughout northern, six northern pueblos, which are Okeo Ingue, Pueblo de Waca, Pueblo de Santa Clara, Pueblo de San Juanzul, Pueblo de Nambé, and Pueblo de Tesuque. We did forget the Pueblo of Picois and we're currently working with a Pueblo of Taus currently, trying to get some new routes in there. We've been, there've been a lot of conversations. We do have a bus that goes in there, but we're trying to expand that service within the Taus Pueblo. Annual, we travel approximately 1 million miles a year. We have a total of 75 employees and we cover approximately 10,000 square miles is what the service covers. As you can, our next slide, you can see that our community serves, we have 50 plus communities that we serve and 18 are within the, within our Taus County communities. There's 18 different communities that we serve. I know that, I mean, Rodarte and Vado and some of the smaller communities all the way up to Costilla, we have bus service. One of the newer routes that was put in, up to three, I don't say, it services three peaks, but they come out to the road, but it also goes to tres perebas and we service a lot of the three peak in that area because in Colorado Road, for a lot of people up there that don't have transportation opportunities, and that's a couple of days a week. So on our next slide, we have historical ridership. You know, we, the NCR TV took over the chilling line not too long ago and it increased the ridership by 45%. You know, we, the NCRTD took over the Chile line not too long ago, and it increased the ridership by 45%, you know, which is a good thing, but without the Taos ridership, you know, that's when we've come consolidated, at least 4.5%, we continue to gain ridership, and you know, nationally, the trend has been reduced because of the fall in fuel prices, but we still continue to gain ridership even with that. The rail runners numbers on here, it's just a one-way, it's from Albuquerque to Santa Fe, and that's North Bonboni, because the NCRTD does fund a portion of the rail runner. Since we started providing services in 2009, we've had 6.6 million riders, and that's how many people have benefited from the service. And the Taos County ridership of the total, if you look at the ridership, you know, they're holding pretty steady, the only one that has kind of declined that we look at is U and M, and you know, we had a lot of riders at the beginning, and it's gradually declined, but the other ridership has kind of held stiff. Taos County represents 45% of the total ridership in all the NCRTD opportunities, so just so you have some figures as people approach you on how we're doing that, because it is funded by a grocery seed tax, and as Tony told me a little later in the presentation, we'll talk about that. Some of the recommendations that we look at is one of the, we have been, in 2005, last few years, we've had no audit findings, and we have been awarded a recognition for our annual audit presentations or annual audit reports in the last few years, it's a very aggressive thing that we're trying to do, make sure that our audits are up to place, and not only our financial reporting is stellar, so we want to make sure that, you know, as we move forward to continue the type of service that people know in the community, that we're doing a good job in how our money is spent, and then accounting for it, so. And so, want to thank our staff for that. One of the things in the Santa Fe reporter, you know, they asked about the 25 things we love about Santa Fe, and one of those is that it, the NCRTD services the mountain trail service, and that's the one that goes actually up to the ski valley, and it's a year-round service, you know, during, when they're not hauling skiers, they're hauling bicyclists up there. So, it's a great route, it's a great opportunity for that community, we're here in Taos, you know, we're working more and more with our ski valley and the opportunities that it could provide, moving visitors from the ski valley down to Taos, so that we have the opportunity to get those visitors that have come to Taos. One of the things that we jumped on board with is safe places, the safe place program. We have a partnership with the Taos-based Dream Tree Project, you know, and our buses, as many buses that we have, each of them are a safe place for our kids, if they're running into problems and they need to get away, they're feeling pressure, this is, and all of them are labeled as safe places, and it gives them an opportunity, and the bus drivers have been trained, they know what needs to be done, they jump on a bus, they know who to contact and be part of that, so. I think that's a great opportunity, as many buses and communities that we cover, it just lends itself well to that organization, so. These are some of the recommendations and different things that the NCRTD is doing, and there's much more, so I'm going to turn the rest of it over to Tony and Jim, so.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here this morning.
And members of the county commission. The next slide, we'd like to share some information with you regarding our survey that was conducted in 2016, and we undertake this survey every five years, so the last time we did it was in 2011, and I'm pleased to report that 2011 to 2016, our satisfaction numbers increased again, and during this last survey, the overall satisfaction rate with the RTD buyer riders was 94% of them rated, as indicated, they were very satisfied, highly satisfied. Just some statistics about our riders. We asked them why they ride the little bus, and 56% of them said they don't have a vehicle, that's why they utilize the bus, and 42% said save money. And the primary reason for riding the bus was to undertake necessary shopping and medical services, and 53% of them have a household income of $17,000 or less, and 70% have a household income of less than $30,000. So, just by looking at these statistics, and this damn graph is our services, our lifeline services for our riders that utilize the system in the Spore County area, and without that service, a lot of them would have challenges in getting to medical appointments, to getting to work, or to undertake necessary shopping as well. If you want to look at more details regarding the survey, and it's broken down by specific routes, you can go on our website, and that information is there. As Mr. Chairman here indicated to you, we go all the way to Chama, and all the way to Costilla County, near the Colorado Borders, and all the way to Edgewood, and as if we only have enough long routes, we decided to do one more here. It's about 85 miles long, and so we'll be starting a new service come October of 2017, and that service will go from Chama to Arlington two days a week, and three days a week, it'll go from Dulce to Chama. The days of that service and those locations were determined by the survey that was conducted in the Icaria Apache Nation area, Dulce, and that's where those folks want to go, and that's where they want to get their services from. So, we were able to receive a grant, tribal transit funding grant, federal grant, which is paying for the startup of this route announcement for a new bus, and the Grand Nation has contributed funding as well for the startup of the service. One of the undertakings we have going on right now is a transit consolidation study with the city of Santa Fe, and we're throwing that at this point in time, and we'll be getting back to the board with the initial recommendations here in late May, early June, and it's kind of looking at whether the Santa Fe Treados transit system should be acquired by the Regional Transit District, the RTD. We've done similar acquisitions of systems, MASPLO system, the River County system, and then in 2015, the Chile line here. And all those acquisitions have been positive for those agencies, they've saved money, and been able to reutilize those funds into other services, and we've been able to eliminate duplication of costs and services as a result of that. So, we're not sure what this study will come out indicating as to the benefits of it, but it's got to be good for both the RTD here in Colorado, the city of Santa Fe, for us to continue to go forward. We'll be having four public meetings in the city of Santa Fe, and once those meetings are done, and that input's been ascertained, we'll be bringing the final report back to our board, as well as the Santa Fe City Council for a decision as to whether we proceed with the consolidation or not. If we do go forward, pretty much it'll only be really one transit system remaining as a standalone in the four-county area, and that would be Los Alamos, Tomcito, and Red Miners, they just run one little bus, but otherwise, the district will have acquired and assimilated all the other systems into one regional system. ADA, that's been one of our extensive projects that we've been working through over the past several years, and several years ago, again, assessment of all of our bus stops, and identifying deficiencies in the observies regarding the American Disabilities Act. And fortunately, to obtain transit alternative program funds to assist with bringing a lot of these bus stops into compliance, and I'm glad to announce that as of last week, we've got an additional $1 million grant that we've received for, through TAF, to continue our effort in bringing these facilities into compliance, and also we're taking an analysis of all the bus stops that are here within the town of Taos, because they weren't, they didn't operate the system when we first did the first compliance review, so, but now that we operate the system here, we're going to undertake a compliance review of that, so. Year-to-date, we've garnered about $1.6 million to put towards this effort, and I think with this last amount of funds that we got, we'll be pretty close to being able to complete close to 90, 90% of those stops that need to be brought into compliance. I'm going to ask Jim to come and talk about the next slide regarding the community efforts throughout the system.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you for letting us come in today. I did want to spend just a second to talk about some of our involvement in the community, and we're very proud each year to participate in a number of events throughout the year, things like Santa Fe or Espanola Fiesta, the Holiday Lights Parade in Espanola. Here in Taos, where I was very proud to participate in the annual Halloween event, the Taos Trunk or Treat, which is always a fun, fun event, good way to get out in the community, a lot of people come out. We also, this past year, participated in the Holiday Light Parade in the town of Taos, and again, it was a great event. The past two years, we've been able to participate with the Questa School District in a program that they do on Earth Day, it's called Pollinating, well, last year they called it Pollinating, and students competed with paintings in Questa, Costilla, and Llama, and they had a competition and selected the best paintings, which we were able to hang in our shelters in the Questa area. So, it's been a great program, and it actually goes a long way in beautifying the shelters. Great pieces of art, great color, and you really can only catch your eyes, so. We're looking forward to continuing to work with all of these groups, and this year, we're looking to expand some of our events. Next week on Saturday, we'll be participating in Community Day in the Santa Fe Plaza, and are looking to participate in the rodeo parade in Los Alamos, and every year, Edgewood does a Route 66 event. It's a parade, it's a day of music, and we're going to have a bus in that parade this year as well, so. It's always a pleasure, and people respond well, so we always hope for opportunities to get out and be part of the community, so, thank you.
Two of our new routes were the Mountain Trail, the Cidia Route, and we just recently, our board just recently approved the Mountain Trail route to be a year-round route, a permanent route, and it's been the ridership that's resulted in making it a successful route. In fact, our ridership went from 4,500 in the first year to 5,600 in this most recent fiscal year, so. It's gaining popularity, and it's one of our premium fare routes, so, you know, 5,600 people using it and paying to use it is something that we appreciate, and it pretty much is funded through a public-private partnership. The city of Santa Fe, Santa Fe County, the Railrunner, and Ski Santa Fe all contribute to the funding of the route along with fairs that make up, cover the cost of it. And our last Cidia route just became a permanent recurring route as well. Regional funding, the RTD is funded through the GRT transit tax in the Porch County area. It basically makes up 70% of our revenue for the RTD, and last year, it brought in about $7.2 million. Now, I think some folks are under the impression that the RTD keeps all that money and uses it directly for its own services that it provides, but that is not the case. We allocate that funding on a regional basis to other service providers. For example, here, the Railrunner received about $2.2 million from the RTD for that southbound service, northbound service that they provide. The Tomcito Transit is about $1.4 million, Santa Fe Trails about $1 million, and we end up keeping about 35% of that. So, 65% of that GRT tax goes out to regional services that our board approves on an annual basis. So, it is really a regional system, own services that we provide, but services that others provide that enhances transit throughout the four-county area. One of the other services that we provide to our members is, each member is allowed to have one special service annually, and this year, we're going to be participating with the county here in providing transit service for the New Mexico Association of Counties that Taos County will be hosting, and we've been participating in planning of that here, so I know that's coming up here in June shortly. And we've been also updating our transit system with advanced ITS upgrade. All of our Taos fleet was upgraded here this last year, and they all contain what's called automatic passenger counters, so that drivers no longer have to sit there and put marks on this paper, counting the people that board it. Automatic voice messages, which lets the passenger know what stops are coming up, and automatic head displays, and one of the things that we've been working over the last year towards is getting our system on Google Transit, so that general public can go on Google Transit and just put in where they want to go, where they're starting from, and it will plan their trip out for them as well. So, that's a new feature that'll be coming here, once Google accepts our data, and that's what we're looking to hear that from. And lastly, the transit tax election, and people asked, we're here when we were here, we kind of mentioned this briefly, and this year, we've made further progress regarding when we are anticipating having a transit tax election, and basically, I'm going to give a little bit of history here, back in, and before I go there, I just want to say that both County Manager Leandro and County Attorney Baker have been briefed by myself and our county attorney regarding this issue. But back in November 2008, when the ballot question was put before the voters, the ballot question simply asked the voters if they would approve or were in favor of a 1% grocery seed tax for transit. It made no mention of a sunset, so the voters never voted on a sunset date. However, when ordinances that are required to be adopted by the counties, putting that ads in place, were adopted by all four counties, two things got put into that ordinance, one was a sunset date of. One was a sunset date of 2024. And secondarily, the ordinances contained reference to specific election dates. Specifically, November of 2022 and a special election in 2023. So the ordinances were far more prescriptive than what the voters voted on. As a result of that, in our long-range strategic plan, the board wants to approach the electorate again to remove that sunset date. But in order to do that, we need to have the ability to go to an election here in 2018. And also, just in case we're not successful during 2018, to have subsequent potential election dates that the board's choosing. In order to do that, we are going to be requesting that each of the counties amend their original ordinances that they adopted back in 2008, 2009, to do two things, basically. I should say one thing, and that is to remove the election dates from those ordinances. So that the decision regarding when to go to an election is up to our board of directors. And, but we will leave the sunset in there. And we will go back and ask the voters in 2018 to remove that sunset. Whether we ask them at that time, council, consider an increase in the GRT tax, that will be taken up by our board based upon survey information that we gather from our constituencies. Because the board has a, we have a strategic plan that has enhancements in service levels such as more frequency, expanded routes. We can service, there's a cost of over $100 million over 20 years to implement a lot of those increased amenities and service levels. In order to do that, it's going to take additional revenue. But as to when the timing of implementing those new services and generating income for that, that's something that will be taken up by our board at some future date. It may be in 2018, it may be in a later election. It just depends on what our survey information tells us and what the voters are inclined to want to entertain in terms of any additional increases in GRT. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, will you give any comments on that?
One of the things that, you know, sometimes it gets confusing. We get more bang for our buck, you know, the GRT that's actually collected in our area, we actually, actually, you know, it stays here and that's what's funding our routes. And, you know, sometimes there are shortages in other areas, there are shortages here. But we still get the same amount of service that we pay for. And a lot of times, we get more service than we actually collect GRTs for.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, what is the dollar amount that was collected in Taos County? Of course, the, it was about, at point 2016, it was $1,026,000. And for 2017, it's projected right now at $1,023,000. Part of yours has been less than that, but I think some of the economic activity here, like cleaning up the Cuesta mine and tidying up that Taos ski valley, has been generating some additional revenues. But I think one thing we're just weary about is those are all kind of one-time projects. And try not to plan recurring expenses or services of one-time projects and revenues like that. Thank you very much. Chairman, that concludes our comments. If you'd be willing to stand for the questions, I think Commissioner can.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that the residents of Trespios or that whole area are very grateful. It has helped tremendously. Gives them to be able to go to work, doctors' appointments, and other things like that. Commissioner Mayor Villalobos was very instrumental in getting that done. Certainly appreciated that, and the rest of you as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Leandro, that's a special GRT that county said they optioned to pass for mass transit.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in this case, it was a regional transit tax. I think it was approved by the legislature, by the Department of Commerce. And it's only implemented in a four-county area. And RTD does a very good job budgeting conservatively, much like us. So this year, we're a little above their budgeted numbers, even though some of our neighbors are a little bit below. And so to piggyback on that question, as a member of this finance committee, I really do appreciate the hard work of the staff at RTD and their conservative budget. They face all the same problems all the other local governments are facing right now in a very tough situation. But because of good planning, year after year, they're able to get through it and continue to look forward. And as was mentioned, they have consolidated annual financial report. That's a big deal, it's a really big step, it's a role of the county at some point. They have zero findings and a really good, strong budget. So I would recommend that we thank them for the hard work to keep our taxpayers' dollars safe.
Is there a maximum rate that's contained in the ordinance? Or in the, either or, the ordinance or the statute that enables that? Is there a maximum?
I don't recall what the maximum level is that we can go to. But the ordinances that were adopted by the counties is 18%.
So if you were going to consider increasing the request in the 2018 election, that would be another amendment that would be required to our ordinance in addition to the sunset date?
No. And the reason being is that the ordinances that were asking to amend or ordinances that were adopted with the initial tax election. So any taxes would have to have separate ordinances by the four counties. The four counties would have to all pass identical ordinances, number one, calling for an election. So this is what we anticipate our board will be considering in tomorrow's meeting resolution, asking all four counties to amend their original ordinances, removing the election dates. And after that is completed, hopefully, all four counties will do that. Then prior to November 2018, we will then be approaching each of the four counties, asking the counties to set ordinances asking for a ballot question to be placed on the November 2018 election. And that will be separate from those prior.
Yeah, I understand. So the rate was just for that election and this election, the rate would be right up there?
There may be a question regarding a rate increase, there may not. At this point in time, I believe, I speak on, Commissioner, or Board of Directors, there's sensitivity about any increase in GRT, considering that a lot of our members, cities, and counties would have to deal with the takeaway of the whole harmless and have, in some cases, the magnitude increases in GRT. So it's a matter of timing for us. And also, it's a matter of what our surveys indicate, once we do our polling with our constituents. And our constituents in the four county area are the same constituents each of the county commissions have and each of the city councils have. So as you can see, we're closely intertwined and connected to each other. And for pretty much general public doesn't, I don't think they distinguish tax increase from tax increase. It's regardless of who the entity is, it's still a tax increase, so there's sensitivity about that. Thank you.
So Commissioner, one of the other things too that I just wanted to bring up is, you know, when this all went to vote, and I believe the same way, when it goes for a vote for continuation, it's an aggregate vote, so it's all the counties together. It's not just one county or individual counties that can break away, or it's either all or nothing. I just want to thank you guys for taking the time. Let's do our annual report and know that we're in good hands and the money is being well-spent and well-looked after. As you can tell, no findings, and we've received many accommodations for our reports. Thank you.
All right. So I will see you guys tomorrow, but I need to call in. All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation on behalf of the Regional Landfill Board regarding Recycling Center Operations Fees Proposal. It's to be presented by Mr. Sanchez, who is also Director of Towne Taos Public Works, and Mr. Miranda to comment.
Hi.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
I will have a handout here.
Yeah, it's probably a third. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Miranda and I gave this report already to the Regional Landfill Board, somewhat to the village of Cuesta, which we've been invited back to give the full report. And yesterday, we gave it to the town of Redwood. So the landfill board requested that we go around the beginning and provide this report to them so that they take it into consideration. Hopefully, it's payable. This is about a 30-minute presentation, and I'll try and cut it back in order to have some sort of content. All the information that is provided in this report was obtained directly from the financial department. And it was taken from numbers that go over the wage scale at the landfill and numbers that are generated by sales at the recycle center, which are, the product is also dated. So it's eight years of information, so this is our kind of like dedicated report. So with that, really quickly, we'll start with an overview of the operation. They were started back in 1998, at which time we were collecting four products, generating 384 tons at a diversion rate of 4.3% from the wage stream at the landfill. And the program, since its inception, has been supported by residents of the town of Taos through their building, and there is a recycling field beyond their building. So that's obviously being supported. The latest information we have was for 2016. And as you can see, we're now collecting 10 products, or 4,357 tons of recyclables are being diverted again from the wage stream. And it has increased to 12.3% and still being supported by the residents of the town of Taos.
Can I just jump to a couple of questions? So we're collecting more, but the product revenue is going down and the gap between revenue and operating costs has risen dramatically since 2017.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your way ahead on the.
I'm jumping the gun a little.
To answer your question, that's pretty much it.
That's what?
Absolutely, yes.
Well, I know, just because I got the graphs here, I just wondered why.
He's already on page five, he does this sometimes. I can pull back, just calm down a little bit. Thanks for your reflection, though.
But is, can you point to something specific that has created ever, ever enlarging gap between revenues and operating costs?
Between the revenues and the operating costs? Yes, the, the, somewhere else in the presentation, there is another gap. However, to answer your question, the price of the product fluctuates significantly. And you'll see that somewhere around 2010 and 2011, we actually had some decent years. For the most part, kind of flatlines, and then there are some years that are just horrible as far as revenue is concerned. The cost for operating is either three employees, two employees, or two and a half employees. So that also goes up with the operations and what it is we do or not. So that's basically within it.
And the personnel cost for necessity, or it just gets all contaminated.
So personnel costs are the lion's share of the operating costs, administrative, additional costs.
Yes, and not necessarily administrative, but personnel and utilities.
Utilities are a big part. What portion of utilities is the cost?
Electricity. Oh, I, Commissioner, thank you, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. But it is, it is a factor in the cost of the operations.
I've got their full budget and their last financials, and I'll share them.
Great, thank you. Well, then I'll quit asking questions.
No, please, don't. So today, we, again, we accept the 10 products that I had mentioned. Solid wire, deadened newspaper, newspaper, foam board, cardboard, aluminum glass, plastic steel, and e-waste. Of those 10 products, we do have to pay to dispose of the e-waste or to get it recycled. And basically, there isn't a market for it unless you pay for it. We're not getting anything for that. The other big product is plastic, which you'll see in a couple of other, in a couple of slides. We do collect a enormous amount of plastic, and we get about 10 pounds. However, it costs significantly more to produce a bill. And then, of course, glass, I know that everybody's been talking about glass and what we can do with it, what we can't do with it.
Can we put it in bottles?
Mr. Chairman, there actually is a method to put it in bottles. However, it is more expensive if you just were to dispose of the glass and go by asphalt. Yep. At any time, we're looking at reuse of any of these products. Nobody talks about the energy costs that it takes to reuse them and what we do with the byproduct, because there is a byproduct after we do utilize these things or turn them into a usable product. And so, yeah. So again, the next slide is the growth rate of the product accepted. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier, as you can see, 2011, or 2010, 11, 12, there was this, this little spike, for the most part, they kind of flatlined right in there. On an eight-year average, our biggest product is cardboard. And that generates about 542 tons annually. So again, that's the diversion rate that's coming from the landfill, that is the landfill to a certain degree, all kinds of data in the presentation. This next slide is again an eight-year average, and it shows the products that we have been accepting and processing and what their rates are and percentages. I can go over those in tons if you would like, but mixed paper at 0%, actually, that's 0.4%. When you're reading these powerpoints, it shows that this is an insignia from miles ago. Aluminum at 1.1%, e-waste at 2.2%.
What is e-waste?
Computers, monitors. Computers, monitors, electronics. Phone books at, or, I'm sorry, still at 2.4%, phone books at 2.6, solidware ledger at 2.8, plastic at 3.7, newspaper at 18, glass at 24.4, and of course, again, cardboard at 42.5. And our, again, in tons, our biggest product is cardboard, at 542 tons, while the e-waste goes all the way down to, or the mixed paper, I'm sorry, is at 6%, or 6%, I'm sorry. So that's, that's the range that we're working with right now. And again, this is an eight-year average. The product versus the revenue, on this, on this slide, you can see that what we have shipped out is that bar that just came up, or that graph that just came up, and again, 2010 and '11 shows up significantly, but if we put the, the revenues on there, those also went up. And it's because of sell the product and the recycling fee that the Townhouse residents pay. That's what that represents.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner? In that particular period of time in 2011, 2012, 2010, 2012, why did it spike? Was there something that was being done differently versus other, other years?
No, we haven't. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we haven't done anything different. Again, it's whatever the market is, is supporting or not. If, if we were to go back and take a look at what was happening with steel, with white goods, we would see somewhere, somewhere around 2017 and '12, we'd see a decline of that product, because we had an enormous amount of people in the community recycling it and actually collecting it to recycle it. So our revenues dropped as well as the profit, because the market was paying more at that time. So, you know, if we were to do a study of that, we would see this really huge spike, and then all of a sudden, it starts kind of dwindling down to where we're, to where we're at today.
It follows commodity prices, it does much, and even though it's not recycling oil, oil's connected, and all of that stuff is going down, so.
Yeah. So, the next slide, and I think, Commissioner, thank you on this, is, now this is slightly wrong, but anyway, this is the revenue versus the cost. So the, the green line, again, represents the, the revenue, and again, you can see the spike in '11 and '12. Interestingly enough, our operating costs actually, in 10 and '11, we actually kind of evened out right there. We had a profit of walking 866 blocks from solidware.
Commissioner, thank you. So what about projections going forward? I hate to see that gap continue to get bigger. Do you have any, are you projecting, do you have any plans for bringing in the cost? I know a lot of it is labor, and you can't do much about that, but are you, are you projecting that gap to continue to widen?
Chairman of the Landville Commission, I have not done any kind of study on that. It's, I can use national numbers, I can come up with proposals. What I did was I called around the state to other recycling programs, and of all the communities that I've called, they are all losing money. There is one that has a very sophisticated tipping fee, and that is the city of Osiris, and they're the only ones. Everybody else is subsidizing their programs with either general fund money or solid waste money. Some are open two days, some are open five days, some open one day a month. So it's, when we have that kind of, when we have those different types of system, it makes it a little difficult for us to do those types of projections. City of Osiris has the luxury of being close to I-5, so transporting for them is not an issue. They can go north, or they can go south very easily. Townhouse, Townhouse County, not so much. So this next slide, again, is, is the recycling revenue and the subsidy issue at the Townhouse is engaged in at present and since the creation of the recycling center. And again, as you can see, 2010 and '11, that's when we turned, I'm not too sure if you'd call it a profit, but we didn't end up paying 800 bucks. So the subsidization is the balance of that. For example, in 2006 and '07, that was a 48% subsidy, or $72,000. And again, it goes all across the, as you can see, across the years there. So, and I failed to mention that in the opening remarks, that Miranda might burp something else, or Red may burp something else, so don't feel sorry. So with that last slide, we decided to try and figure out what's going on over at the And again, we used, we used actual numbers, numbers that were paid for in engineering, numbers that were paid for construction to the cell, numbers that were determined at the weigh scale, or utilities, or rentals, or leases, whatever the case may be. So again, we, we had a light expectancy of the cell, and what's coming up now is 2016, that's when we started utilizing the new construction cell, which is a three-acre site, and you'll see that it kind of goes up in a pie shape. That's the same design as the cell, so every year, we get a little bit more airspace on that. Commissioner Homel is on the board for many years, I think he probably appears to live with us. So again, our projections are for seven years. Chairman of the Landville, this was presented to the landfill board a couple of months ago. We used a sitter projection, and it changes the numbers slightly, however, given the information that we got from the consultants and the rate that we're filling the landfill up, were, because of recycling and because of very good compaction rates at the cell, they estimated that we'll go up seven years before we have now. So that's, that's the only change from the presentation that was given to the landfill board a couple of months ago. So with that, the, the costs for the development of the cell were just over $2 million, and again, our diversion rate of recyclables is at 4,357 tons, or 12%. So Chairman of the Landville asked us to do this little comparison of what kind of life we're saving at the cell by recycling. So we did that, and over the course of seven years, we would be saving 10.25 months, or a cost savings of $254,000.
The alarming thing by cannabis is because it's basically cheaper to build a cell than to recycle. And then, just to get to that point here, it just seems, the negative concept of this is that.
But, but you've got to also look at what it's doing for the environment if you recycle.
And that's what his whole goal is here, because it's certainly not the money side or, and I was just shocked, we're really not saving that much at the cell.
Yeah, so on, so on six months, Chairman of the Landville, when, again, when we did the report to the landfill board, the, the months that we were saving on the cell was just right over eight months. However, if we were to set all of that product over at the cell and landfill, the tipping fee annually would be $150,000.
Commissioner, the 10 months, that's, that's over the seven-year satellite?
Yes.
How does the $150,000 extra tipping fee look into?
If we were just to not recycle anything and accept everything over at the landfill, as it goes over the scale, there's a tipping for that, whatever it is, for members or non-members.
That's still over the seven-year, like?
It would be estimated at $150,000 annually. Annual. So what, what Chairman of the Landville was talking about is, the reality of it is, is that we would make more revenue to fit the landfill, and I do share the sentiments of Commissioner Homel, that it's an environmentally sound program. There is a beneficial use.
Huge beneficial.
Huge beneficial use, yes. I, earlier in the presentation, I mentioned plastics. We collect plastics in a 40-yard container over at the center. That makes one bale. And if we're doing the tons that were, that was presented to you, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of material that's not littered along the roadways. We have trouble, we would have trouble with it over at the landfill, because it's not a vitabegable product. So that would be the environmental, the environmental benefit to the community of Townhouse.
Mr. Chair? Mr. French, totally out of Townhouse County, but when you look at the city of San Fede and their paper bag, recycling bags, and we have to pay attention to that fee, any thought on how that is working? Have you heard how that program is working in San Fede? Saving anything?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Homel, I have it. Several years ago, the landfill board and some of the council members had talked about doing a similar program. When we got, when we actually got looking into it, and of course, since then, things have changed, and there's different products that can be used. One of the first places that I went to was over to your own food store, which was a locally owned and operated business that was right off the plaza for many years. And he told me, if you guys were to do that, you would put me out of business, because now I have to charge. These, these grocers aren't purchasing bags by the dozens, they're purchasing them by the hundreds and thousands of dozens, and they have a slew of inventory that needs to be used, or somebody needs to be paid for. It's, it's, it's kind of like a double-edged sword, while it's, for the, for the Townhouse, well, in corporate limits, those bags do become nuisance. They are a nuisance over at the landfill. But, but the ban does equal dollars. And anytime you're recycling, whatever, if you're recycling, that's going to cost you money. So I'd be more than happy to look into that program, but I haven't been six years ago.
Since we brought up that subject, the local store to our left over here, those is switching to a, is offering to switch to a, a different kind of plastic bag. It's a biodegradable, it's a different material than they're, they're making to a map, but I haven't heard a lot of good about the plastic bag, and the people, as far as some of the bags that people bring, they're disgusting.
Yeah, and we, we usually talk about like the, like the bigger providers in the community, Walmart, Smiths, but when you start looking at the convenience stations, as it is right now, you're, you're paying 75 cents for candy water, and you can go buy, buy it for 30 cents, but it really actually costs somewhere else. But if you do this, if you implement this ban on bags, that number's going to go up. There's, there's a really huge thing that's on the grid right now, sorry, gentlemen, where they're trying to raise the solar tax, and it's done. So again, when you go to one of those convenience stations, you will see the impact of that. So I'm not along the lines of that.
Let the person know how I felt about San Fede, so he did a survey of the communities, I asked about, including them, because they're a little different.
So the, the next slide is just a, a list of the, the members and others that utilize the landfill, and of course, Eagle Nest, Red River, Questa, Townhouse County, Townhouse County Solid Waste, Townhouse, Townhouse Ski Valley, and others are waste management, commercial hours, and cash accounts that are paid nobody, that show up at the landfill and pay. That's, that's where we collect the NSL, so it's different.
So you understand Townhouse County Solid Waste is the, our county residents have an account of waste management or another way to go.
So the, the rep is collected at the landfill, we came up with this chart, and it's by the membership, so the first one that came up was the Townhouse, again, at 22%, Townhouse Ski Valley at 1%, Waste Management at 9%, the Commercial Accounts at 11%, Cash Accounts at 8%, Eagle Nest 1%, Townhouse River 6%, Questa at 4%, and then the, the remaining balance of Townhouse County is at 20%. So, so the Townhouse versus Townhouse County, the reason the Townhouse is contributing more is because of the commercial accounts, or commercial users, whatever it is, so we have more of that than Townhouse County, and that's, that's why that discrepancy is there, or that difference. So we took those numbers, and I mentioned to the landfill board, to the Village of Questa, and yesterday to Red River, that the way we based our methodology, it was, it was strictly based on tons. We didn't want to go into each one of the communities and basically start asking for accounts and what their, if they have a 95-gallon container, or a 300-gallon container, whatever it is. So we, we based it on tons, and that's what this represents. And so, since we do have a number for the Townhouse, that's how we based this, this adjustment. So the Townhouse residents are, are on average growing away about 0.7 tons of trash annually. We have a recommended fee proposal of $8.57, and again, that's annually, which it breaks down to, again, if you have a 95-gallon container, that would be 50 cents per month. Right now, they're, right now, the Townhouse is paying 75 cents. So with, with this proposal, I would go and go to the Town Council and ask that that used store addresses some other way, to get it down to 50 cents. So again, we just basically, we don't have to cross 50 cents times 12 months, 6 bucks, take the 6 bucks, divide by the 0.7, and you come with the $8.57 annually that would be the recycling fee. and you come up with the $8.57 annually that would be the recycling fee.
Per customer?
Per customer. And again, we showed that methodology to perhaps offer it to the other members as one way of conducting the report. So this next slide is the recycling fee consideration for the memberships. And again, this is based on tons. And basically what we did is we took our budget and we took the tons that are being disposed of. And this is what we came up with at $8.57 per ton. So Taos County would be 54,000 compared to the Townhouse at 60,000. So again, that is our proposal to the governing bodies. So we figured that at the end of a two-year period or a three-year period, we would actually have a surplus of money left over if this were to be adopted by the members of the landfill board. And to give that to the community to try and further assist with cleaning up these legal dump sites and large inventory of tires or green waste or whatever, I would go back and try and offer something back to the landfill board and propose that maybe perhaps the tipping fee for tires be waived for one day. And we would accept those at the landfill and shred them versus bailing them and storing them. It's been approved by the state. We did this past year and we got a couple of auto loan operations there. To rent that tire shredder is right at $35,000. So it's as expensive to recycle as it is to collect and store. And that's why we would offer something back to the memberships and waive the tipping fee so that we get these inventories out from the providers and backyards and fields and whatever it is.
But Mr. Chairman, aren't there individuals, companies that collect tires for building, construction purposes?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Romano, they do and they're very selective with the inventory that they ask for. It's not any tires, it's a specific size and width. And they do take it. There are companies that will come to the community and remove the tires and of course, that is at a cost.
So are these individuals or companies, construction people, taking out the tires that they need? Or are they being informed that there's a supply of them available? Do they take them out or we, they're not made aware of it?
Commissioner Commissioner Romano, the state of Mexico doesn't allow us to allow scavenging at the landfill once across the scale. So what is happening is the folks from the solid waste at Taos County are doing a very good job of offering those tires to those communities before they go over the scale.
At the transfer stations?
I'm not really sure if it's at the transfer stations or if it's at their offices or how they make it available. But they have diverted an enormous amount of tires. I don't have those numbers, but again, they're selective. So again, the same principle would apply when we're doing green waste. We do get the tub rinder twice annually and that's at a cost of about $30,000. So again, that would be offered to the communities. Tipping fees be waived for a day and we have the stuff over at the landfill and get it recycled. Our five-year initiatives includes activities over at the landfill as well as at or from the wastewater treatment facility, which is a, or regional facility. If the commission wasn't aware, we have been accepting sludge over at the landfill without permitting for that. So it's no longer going to the new Landville. So we have an inventory of that. And while it's not a usable product when it's disposable at the landfill, we are proposing that it becomes a usable product if we mix it back in with the green waste and start to produce compost. We are currently working on a plan that we will propose to the environment department to see what it is we need to do to start making this product over at the landfill. The other thing we're looking into is purchasing an air curtain burner so that we can start burning construction material that is no, that is no longer considered to be a green waste or a marketable green waste. So therefore, if we burn that up, again, we defer from the waste stream and we save their space and it's environmentally safe to be using that. And we've already gotten approved and safe to do that. So I think that concludes our presentation. I will try and turn questions from this.
Kind of in a nutshell, Commissioner Spenosa, by saying this wrong step in, if you don't do something to help this, it's going to go away, meaning it's going to get closed. And I don't think any of us want that to happen. We're looking at less than 75 cents a month per customer. Maybe there's other ways in the future that, as there's sunsets of different taxes or something like that. I mean, the worst-case scenario is they could shut the door July 1 and then we start forming the landfill. Yes, it's a small amount, but to me, it's an amount that matters. And I don't know how we address it, but we definitely have to address it and it's now. In a nutshell?
Small, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mike?
So the $8.57 would be added on to our solid waste. We change the ordinance again.
Chairman Commissioner Nigro, it would have to be passed on to the consumer. We did raise our rates, as you all remember, about a year or two years ago. And that's just carrying us through and wearing the back now in our solid waste fund. But we don't have the ability to absorb this without passing it on to the consumer. That's not what we'd be doing. It would have to be done that way. Well, you know, when tipping fees went up for us a few years ago, we certainly did increase our internal recycling efforts in order to try and minimize that amount that's going to the landfill to save us the money we needed to keep that budget working. So you know, there is a significant amount of recycling effort being done within the solid waste department. And you know, we'll continue to do that for a certain amount. But we don't recycle everything that they do at the Town Recyclings. We tend to focus on the items that do bring in some revenue for us, whether it's at least very neutral in the recycling effort. But we do also subsidize some of those recycling efforts of our own, our own. So I just wanted to point out some of those.
So in the not-too-distant future, will they bring an agenda item for a decision on, on this amendment?
We, yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nigro, we are, we're wanting to do that. One of our initiatives, based on our work study, back in January, we met, you know, the truth was to look at giving a discount to our seniors. This issue has postponed that. We need to really look at how this is going to affect us. We really would love to give that discount to the seniors, but everything that we do to cutting revenue needs to find some other revenue in another place. We need to be very neutral in any decision we make. So we've been postponing that because of this issue at this time and trying to figure out what our future going to be and probably not to affect our readers.
They're very conservative in operating costs. We see that monthly at our meetings. They do a detailed report on the finances of the entire solid waste and recycling each month. And it's kind of crept up on us, as you saw with the yellow line past the green line in that one slide, was just in the last month, I mean, in the last year, 14 months. And he's been telling us that since then. We're trying to, he was trying to put things together to break this to us the best way, but bottom line is kind of a loser for the reason.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Nigros. Mr. Spenosa, do you see the decrease in the amount you're recycling going in? Is making the cost to operate higher? I mean, is this going to be something that we initiate, we, it's going to make the residents be more aware, try to recycle more, which bring in more product, keeping, you know, reading more tonnes might help to some extent. I mean, it doesn't make sense a whole lot, but it's part of the, it's part of the process. If you have staff working and you're reading less recyclables and they're, you know, you're not getting the tonnes you need to produce for regular.
It makes, Vice Chair Nigros, it makes a whole lot of sense as an individual to recycle. I do it faithfully at my home and I have employees that have worked through this as well, just because it's kind of like a decent practice. But I produce more recyclable material than I do MSW at my house, which if I were to have to pay for disposal, I wouldn't be paying as much for the MSW. Because I'm reducing the weight of stuff that I'm paying for the landfill. So that's, that's the idea. The reality of it is, people just won't recycle and that's their prerogative.
But our staff is then chasing more legal dumpsters and the Royals and Sugar Lane and Straight Arrow. Commissioner Romano just checked up on the Canyon, all of that. I mean, we're just, the downside of it is a horrible recycling. And you know, if he reduced what he took at the recycling center, that maybe controlled some of the outbreak. They stopped collecting plastics or something like that. Goes to the other side of Commissioner Romano's point. That's one of the things that is looting the works, but that's the one that he's losing the most money in. And that's the logical thing is do it recycling plastics, but that's not the answer. Carpet, a tonnage of carpet, but that's, that's not the answer.
Mr. Chairman, on the sludge and the things, basically that's septic companies, right? That are contributing to that? What is considered sludge?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Romano, it's the end product that we end up with after the process at the wastewater treatment facility. So it does include what the septic haulers dispose of at the site.
And right now, there are septic haulers that have their own private sites?
There is one that I'm aware of and I'm not, I don't, I don't know if he's permitted today. I know he was permitted like last year, but I haven't kept up with his permitting, but there's only one.
And another question I have is who are the partners now in the landfill?
They're all listed in that one slide.
Yeah, Eagle Nest, Red River, Westa, Taos County, Townhouse, and Taos Ski Valley. No, Taos Pueblo is not. We, they do dispose of the solid waste over at the, at the landfill and they do bring in product to the, to the recycle center. However, when we went through the numbers, Taos Pueblo was generating almost nothing. It was like 43 tons a year. So they opted not to be part of the, part of the landfill board. Being part of the landfill board means that the members pledge their environmental tax to that initiative. And Taos Pueblo opted out for good reasons. They're generating very, very little MSW.
So I think with this, we rest staff to possibly look at, you know, there's no other taxes we could dedicate. 16 county border tax, this is the same thing. And we're pretty good at that until some current tax starts to sunset.
Mr. Chairman, the board, is there anything else you would like for us to investigate and to present to you? We tried to cover as much as we could and be very basic about it. However, if there's something that you would like to, for us to look into further, would be more happy to that.
First of all, I guess just the possibilities of varying your hours and some have, you know, see how it works in other counties. Just to see if there's any options on the cost side, if there's any changes in operations that we might be able to make that would help the cost.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nigro, we did look at that. And one of the considerations that we did again was closing down Saturdays. And it's a very small cost savings. We do have a number of people who are happy to like to.
I think if you close down on Saturdays, all that waste, you end up Sugar Lane, West River, it's ended on the Canyon.
Again, we're, we're, it would be based on product that is accepted. So probably.
Not to prolong the meeting, but French, you mentioned tipping fees at Las Vegas, San Diego County or the city of Las Vegas?
It was, it was the city of Las Vegas.
And you said they were quite unique in what way?
Well, they're somehow or another partnered up with the university of Amonistania and I believe some kind of community college. And they have different providers in the community and do a lot of different things. And it's, it's kind of unusual in there, but they do make sure that they cover the cost of recycling somehow.
So they recycle, that's what their program is?
They, yes, and I'm sorry, I don't have the information with me. They don't recycle as much as the community in Taos does. They only recycle, they only recycle the marketable products. And they, if, for example, if they, if a customer calls for an additional pickup of their refuse, they're charged 230 bucks for that additional pickup. And they take that money, they give it in their solid waste program, however they do it. But they're very aggressive and again, they do make sure to collect somehow or another.
Could you add something like that here?
I, Mr. Chair Commissioner, I personally would want to do that. I would want to be at a word of Pandora, and so it's very dangerous to argue over a bucket of plastics. And it's, it's a little risky. Again, they get some support from the university. And I am supposed to schedule a meeting with them so that we can go and have a field trip of operations. My last, I'll bring the information back to you.
Anything else? Thank you, Commissioner Spenosa.
Thank you. Sorry for the trouble, thank you.
All right. And this will, there, we'll move on. Hopefully this will be a little more on the episode here. This will be item 10B, presentation of our Taos County Treasurer's Third Quarter Financial and Investment Committee Report to the Board of Finance. It's going to be presented by our Taos County Treasurer, Mrs. Ingraham.
Good morning, commissioners. Taking your hats off, commissioners, and putting on your Board of Finance hats. And Ms. Baker, the county manager, and her, and the audience. I'm presenting the third quarter financial report as, to satisfy the provisions of the investment policy. And so this financial report is ending March 31, 2017. And it's the third quarter report. We have a, an investment committee. We have a, an investment committee meeting on April 25th, 2017, at 1:00 PM. And the members that attended were myself, Paula Santis, I still have her to see accounting there, but she's the chief deputy, Mary Anna Gonzalez, the accountant, Leandra Porter, the manager, Luca Martinez, finance director, and Mark Agos, Commissioner was absent, and Rose Vargas, who was main office manager, was absent. And I'd like to pause here for just a minute and I was wondering if, in trying to solve, I know you all serve in different committees and different boards and you're stretched, that maybe there might be an alternate to, to Mr. Agos and?
As we discussed earlier, Susan, I said that I would be the alternate and coordinate with this.
Okay.
That's already been addressed.
Okay, well then, I appreciate that very much. I would like a representation from the, from the Board of Finance at, at our meeting. And the investment report again was, we have the investment monthly report as prepared by Paula Santis, and, and if you look in the following page, you will see that the distribution that is made of the investments that were, that were made in a, in a ladder type of environment and, and we did not, as you can see, that we did not yield any interest. And that was because after seeing this report, I made a call to Larry Lumberg from the Morgan Capital Markets and I went ahead and made a copy so that you would see the, the conversation we had and, and so he says here, "Good morning, thanks for calling yesterday. As I check the account, some of your CDs have paid. We just didn't have the account set up to send out the interest payment. Today I'm having my assistant, Sabrina, send back all of your interest current to you. Going forward, when interest is paid, it will automatically ACH out of your bank account." And I've attached a, a current holding report, which will give you lots of good information. Page five of mine is the cash flow report, which will show you the interest payments for the next 12 months. Page two is a great snapshot view of your investment committee meeting or to show Commissioners. Again, that, the, this page shows how much is invested, what is, what to expect in interest for the next year, ever to yield up, the portfolio is 1.69%, etc. And so if you see the total on the next, on the following page, can you move on to this page, please? That was a conversation that we had, but then the report is, okay, that, it says, "Hope you are doing well. I understand you inquired about interest for the investments we purchased for you in February. We updated your account so that our receipt will, will pay interest daily. We have sent an ACH in the amount of $4,017.27 today. Please see the breakdown below. The amount $2,364.04 is made up of seven interest payments and the remaining amount of $1,653.23 is from purchasing two CDs at a discount instead of farm." And please, if you have any questions. So already, if you see that 4,000, last year it was approximately $6,000 in interest in the whole year. We've already gained 4,000. And so our goal is approximately 33,000 in interest this year by having invested. It was the learning process, getting it done, but we did it and, and it was a good thing. So that was the report on the, on the investments. The second item was the third quarter financial report by myself and I will give you that in a moment, and the third quarter DFA financial report is compiled by Luca Martinez, which is the, the report that goes to DFA and is prepared from the financial reports that are prepared at the, at the treasurer's office. And you have those in a, in a packet that is presented, so if you kind of just go on that is all, the third quarter report.
So you know we're also getting that?
Yes, that's why I'm going through it, yes. And so if you, go ahead and continue going through till, I bet you, thank you very much. But what I do is I take the, I look at the reports, the final reports that are prepared at the treasurer's office and I prepare, okay, I'll go back. No, I think they're in a different order, but let's go ahead and do the, that's the GRT report. And, and again, I break that, that down, I want to see exactly how, where we are in our, in our GRT and, and this is, like I said, in a nutshell, we're, should be at 75%. If you look at the very end, everything is, we're hitting more and, or a little over. So that is a good thing. And so staying flat as was budgeted was a good thing, anything in excess, again, that accumulates and, and, but it needs to be, remain flat because we don't know the projects that, that continue to unfold and at the end, you know, we, we would take probably a slump down. So again, we just, that was the good budget strategy. Again, another page, let me see what I have.
Okay, that. The first one.
Just keep on going. Okay, right there, that analysis. And that is the analysis that I've kind of prepared, just to kind of extract from all the different reports and kind of put this together. And I have prepared the, in the first column, the final budget, that's, that'll show the adjusted, the adjusted budget of the revenue, which is now 15,220,218. And we have actuals of 10,608,47.67. And then the expenditures were also adjusted, budget of 11,310,739. And then the actuals were 7,623,715.55. And then the next one is the transfers out. According to the report, we have, and also those were adjusted, that those were the adjusted budget of transfers in, in and out are 2,984,115. But in, as they're compiled in the report, it's, in and outs is 3,018,961, I see, 3,018,961.47. But I've broken them down to where you can see that, how they go to the different departments or different funds, I should say. And so you have them all listed on there. And then in the next column, so you can, excuse me, you can see in the, in the general fund total, so if you look at the totals, right now we're at a, at a deficit of 625,829. And again, I'm going to show you in the, in the graph, it'll kind of explain those numbers. And there was some discussion in our, in our committee meeting and, which we, which we discussed morally that. And then I have for you the general fund cash balance at the, at the end of the third quarter, 169,965.29. And I've included the cash balances of, of the road department and when the, when you remove the required reserve of 167,585, then you have a cash balance of 24,859 to make sense. The 207, which is the emergency 911, has a cash balance of 275,900. The senior program, the 219, has cash balance of 157,901. The detention facilities, the 226 has 43,71. And the crime match has 68,243,000. The 399, which is a capital and has been fun, has 1,931,414. And the EMS 509 is 237,149. So if, if you saw that the, there, we have healthy, any cash balances in all these other funds. The next page, if you would, move to the next, there is the graph. And I was thinking about this graph as, as, as I was preparing it. And when you see the, the beginning, you know, you see where, where that, that the lights begins, way over the top. And we've begun very well and, you know, from the previous years, so that is a good thing. And then you kind of take a slump down because we go, we go through the months, you know, using what, before the tax season comes and then you, you hit December and we, we take a huge spike up. But then we have our bills, the starts, you know, you kind of go down and then you take, we get, we're hit with our, I think the biggest ones are our insurance costs. So that really kind of throws this way down. And then I thought, you know, we are, we collect money to provide services. So this is kind of a, a way of showing how, how our, our revenues come in, but how they're, they're utilized through the year. And, and, and I thought, like I said, they, they show a very good way of, of viewing exactly what transpires in the county. And then the next, the following page, any stuff? The following page are the numbers. And again, we're in March, there is that 6,169,965, any cash balance. We have from, from the last year to this year, that fund, it was eloped by 38,000, 38,792. But then we have our 312s reserve of 2,789,507. And then I also kind of factor in, as always, the, the 412s reserve and?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Are we going to go for any of this with all of it, the next position, the next meeting?
Yeah.
And, but again, this is, again, our reserves, like I said, are meant and, and then on the next, on the next page, I have, again, I have the, I wanted also you to view the detailed report of our revenues in the treasurer's office for the property tax current. And we're at, we have collected 7,360,000. Again, the, the April budget was 9.9 million. And in our prior year taxes, we have, if you look at the very end, we have 10% more to, to receive. And so we're going to get that, I'm pretty sure we're going to get that in some and over. So hopefully we'll get over the 26% that we still have in the, in the, now for the second installment payments of our property tax and then our property interest and penalty. We have 21% to, to bring in, we're aggressively sending out letters and on the, on the letters that we send out and to get returned, we're sending them out direct. So this way people get them directly, because we send them out certified and then directly. But in the discussion that we have in the, in our committee meeting, it's, it serves a purpose to, to see how, where we are again in the, in the financial report with the finance director, with the county manager and ourselves and just seeing how we can, again, looking, we're very fortunate at this time that we have a healthy budget and, and healthy finances and we continue to be fruitful and do our best. Yes. And again, I, you, I, listening to the presentation, sorry, it just, the needs are there and they're great. But again, you know, like I said, I look, I look at my graph and we're here to provide a service and, and we're, we don't make a profit, we just try to make it, the revenues that we come in, that come in, stretch as much as possible. So I thank you for the time that you've given me to present, to make this presentation.
Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Susan. All right. Moving on, item 10C is discussion, consideration and approval of a job description for building systems supervisor must be presented by our human resources director, Ms. Rene Weber, and possibly our manager, Mr. Corbano. Ms. Weber, how are you?
Yes, good, good morning. And I am here to present a proposed job description for building systems supervisor and respectfully request your approval and I will also stand with questions.
Questions?
Mr. Corbano? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think I've had the opportunity to speak with all of you individually on this, the reason going forward to this position, this is a big complex, it takes a lot of dedication. I'm just serving thanks to Mr. Sanchez for his attempt to keep up with this along with all his other projects, but it, it does deserve a dedicated person to be able to provide the services to this building alone. And so that's what we're asking for at this time is to agree with this individual, utter this job description forward so that we can place an advertisement to see what's out there. We will advertise both internally and externally, just to see what's out in the market. I stop for any further questions and do recommend approval.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's a good plan, I'm just curious, what do you think our total employee count is going to be at the end of 2017 compared to 2016? I'm really in the numbers today.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner, thank you for that question, we're actually working on providing you guys with, for the final adoption of preliminary and FTE budget. So you can see the past five years and looking forward how we would like to basically move forward with our, over the last five years, we haven't added a whole heck of a lot of FTEs. We have kept them in the budget, but there's always been vacancies. What we're really encouraging as a date is to fill our positions, our budgeting board and just to keep a full staff so that we can get, however, we are growing as a county and the needs for more staff are always there, they're always present and we're doing our best to juggle without adding multiple FTEs every year. This FTE addition is primarily going to be funded by the lease revenue that came from the Forest Service across the way, so there's a $30,000 increase in revenue, which is also going to require an increase in attention to those tangents and enlargements. So it makes sense to add that FTE to this context.
I look forward to that report and I'm making a motion to approve. Okay, I accept your motion to approve the job description for building systems supervisor.
Second, Mr.?
And second. And first of the question, I have asked Mr. Corbano, Mr. Romano to organize and, and get a consultant possibly on board to, to do a, in a sense, desk audit of all positions that we have, so we see where from an independent source, where we're lacking maybe in some departments and where we're a little heavier in other departments and, and see where the true needs are, the necessary, the citizens of the county. Hopefully that will be the words. So I do have a motion in a second for the job description approval. Any further discussion or approval?
Commissioner Romano?
Yes.
Commissioner Agos?
Yes.
Commissioner Agos?
Yes.
Commissioner Edger?
Yes. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So it was a consent agenda, I will read the items as listed, we will vote on them in one vote. If there's any item that wisher needs further information or discussion on, you'll advise me at the end of the reading and we'll pull that item out prior to the vote, it'll be handled as the next order of business. Item A is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for enhanced 911 fund. Item B is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of the budget adjustment for office emergency management fund. Item C is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for DWI domestic violence fund. Item D is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for planning and zoning. Item E is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of budget adjustment for Rio Fernando Voltaire Fire Department Fund. Item F is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of budget adjustment for Old Coliseum Fire District Fund. Item G is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of out of state travel on actual. on actual reimbursement for Mr. Michael Cordova, Tauskelli Fire Chief, to attend the IFC Instructors Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina from July 25th to the 29th of 2017. Item H is discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of donation of S C D A self-contained breathing apparatus packs and self-contained breathing apparatus bottles to Sierra Bonita Rincon Volunteer Fire Department from Latir. Item I is discussion, consideration and decision regarding the approval of purchase of a tender, water tender truck through HGAC contract for Penasco Fire Department. Item J is discussion and consideration and decision regarding the approval of juvenile adjudication fund grant application, Revolution 2017-25, a resolution authorizing the county to submit an application to the Department of Finance Administration, local government division to participate in the juvenile adjudication program. Item K, finally, is discussion, consideration and decision regarding approval of out-of-state travel on actual reimbursement for Joaquin Gonzalez to become certified amulets building motor in Daytona Beach, Florida, June 3rd to June 6th, 2017. As for motion to pass the consent agenda as presented. So, Mr. Chairman. Motion, also, and a second, for follow up.
Commissioner Ramelow.
Yes.
Commissioner Black.
Yes.
Ms. Cherkagus.
Yes.
Chairman Pepper.
Yes. Next item is item 12, a quick, brief county manager's report on matters affecting Taos County. This report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll do my best to keep it quick and brief. First, I just wanted to let the full board know about a decision that was made regarding Straight Hearts. Back in the fall, we had a presentation with a request to consider to later on in our budget year, the idea of buying a Spain muter van from the Straight Hearts. We never had brought that forward for a budget adjustment. We did not have it in the budget. It was something we had talked about, considered due to a lot of shortfalls that we've experienced in our federal funding and some of our state funding. The decision was made here at the end of year not to ask you for that budget adjustment. Also, a consultant of the sheriff who runs most of the Spain muter clinics and he did advise it would be highly unlikely to get full utilization of that asset. And so instead of buying the asset at $25,000 to $40,000, it's going to be sitting in a parking lot, we made the decision at this time to continue to focus on Spain muters through contractual. So I just wanted to inform the board of that at this time that we will not be asking to fund that purchase. It's just not the right purchase for the county. Also, I want to let the board know that we received a request from Taos Municipal Schools for a letter reaffirming our county commitment to maintaining our school bus routes. Our EMS director, Joaquin Gonzalez, asked the schools for a old bus, which they did grant to the county, which Mr. Gonzalez would like to use as a primary bus. He's going to kind of prepare that for worst case scenario response if we had a major incident.
It's all something different. I've seen the one in Santa Fe that they developed. It's really, really used it for the San Juan Walk and stuff. That was, it was pretty cool and I actually requested this to all school down there and go through that during that time that they're down there. You got a lot of the ideas.
And the school board did authorize the transfer of the assets. So it will be a county asset. They just did ask that. That letter come to the county manager reaffirming our commitment to school bus routes. We are always committed to school bus routes and we've also worked very closely with the school board in the past for any means that may pop up, if it's an emergency request for SCORIA or just, you know, anything like that, we do work with the school. So I want to let the board know that that letter will be coming out from the school. Veteran Cemetery, we are moving forward on building the fence and also been looking at a date for a dedication. We've contacted Congressman Juan's office to see if he could be present considering a lot of the support that he's given to this project. And it looks like what would be best for his schedule would be June 2nd. It's a Friday. So I just wanted to inform the board that that's the date we're going to be shooting for, hopefully. And I'll let you know there's a change to that, but this time it's still kind of in the air, but that's the last correspondence I had seen. We do hope after we go through our preliminary budget today, if there's not too many questions, too many concerns, we'd like to have that on the next regular meeting for adoption to get that within our deadline of May 31st so that we don't have to have another special meeting for the board. So if there's any questions, concerns, you can talk to me or Miss Martinez directly and we'll do our best to capture those and we'll put them into the budget. But I also want to let you know as we go through the budget today, we're not looking at capital. We'll be looking at our capital over the summer. I do have some concerns about our federal funding, especially Pilt. We do expect to receive the Pilt this year, but there may be a slight reduction and it has not been budgeted for the new year yet. So we're really hoping that as we get into the summer months, we'll have a clarity as to what we will be receiving and we can build our capital budget between now and the final.
And there may be some adjustments on personnel also at a later time depending on some other factors. Commissioner Black, does it affect any of the capital plans for this summer?
No.
Yes.
Fortunately, we have basically waited a year to start our transition, knowing how the money came in. So we are good for this year, but it does highlight how bad a federal cut like that could hurt us. We've been very fortunate. We've done some good moves to basically protect our employees and our staff. As the treasurer mentioned, we have, you know, the three 12s, four 12s. We're not having to consider the idea of FERgos or DAOS or RIS in our county this year and I really appreciate that. But it's still a very fine line and a very tough budget to put together and we are working on another balanced budget. But if we don't get those federal funds, it will affect our pipeline in the future projects. And that's unfortunate because Mr. Hammond has worked really hard to develop a good pipeline for us to keep working all constantly. So that would be unfortunate and we do continue to fight for it. We did send out the letter from the manager to all our delegation reminding them how important that meeting is for us. As I mentioned, I'm trying to avoid giving too many special meetings on June 6th, a regular meeting on June 6th. I do want to schedule a regular, a special work study session after a regular meeting to discuss the JVC and juvenile protection. So we expect that to be coming your way. You've noticed the Teddy Green sculpture. It's out there. We will be dedicating that. There's a two-day event for the dedication of that sculpture, May 19th and 20th. And we'll get more details up to you as well on that. And then just one last thing I just wanted to touch on and mention quickly. We've experienced some vandalism at our restored county courthouse. It seems that people are being able to obtain access to our roof from our adjacent buildings. And so people are getting up on the roof, they're spray painting, they're damaging the roof, they're damaging our canales, they're damaging parts of that. And it's thank goodness for our staff that can come in and fix it, but it's becoming a tedious approach to continue to work on that. So we are trying to figure out how to address it, but I just wanted to share with the board that it's a problem that we've been noticing more over the last month or so. And we're going to try and work with the town police to see if they can help us figure out who's doing this and if we can get them to stop.
More wire.
More wire, probably some cameras, more security. I don't know about more, but cameras definitely would be a good approach. I stop for any other questions on anything else at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 13A, any new business to be considered in future commissioning? We will be bringing back Commissioner O'Donnell's two items to the detention center. Those will be, me and Mr. Johnson get them worked in. Any commissioner announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be attending N M A C board meeting
in Fort Talis.
In Fort Talis tomorrow morning.
All right, and I told him I would not be able to attend, but I have a representative coming for you.
Mr. Chairman, the criminal coalition will be having the 12. Here, James.
Okay.
I'll just, just.
Not many of these time. Bill Ben, how are you? You were supposed to have been on vacation and turned into a family emergency. Our best to you and your family. Anything else?
Also, Mr. Chairman, I probably, maybe after the, the review of our budget, I'd like to have staff further move on to request of that government.
We'll get that, okay?
I just, it's been, it's been a couple of years and I feel that I'd rather wait, maybe if it's still waitable in potential, if it's effective, that that might be something I want to do is not be the the other commissioner that happens to deal with it. So I'm just, it's kind of taking a while, so I'm going to hold back on that and we'll see where that goes after a few years.
Okay. All right, anything else moving into the county? Next item on the agenda is adjournment. So, ready? One more, a second to adjourn this meeting, for follow up.
Commissioner Ramelow.
Yes.
Commissioner Black.
Yes.
Ms. Cherkagus.
Yes.
Chairman Pepper.
Yes, thank you all for being here.